Hi, I'm Julie Thompson. Welcome to the Plymouth Select Board Candidate Interview. I want to take a moment to thank the candidates for participating in this interview and collaborating with PAC TV to bring this informational programming to residents and voters this election season. Let me explain the format. We will be conducting a one-on-one interview-style Q&amp;A format with each candidate lasting about 30 minutes. Responses will not be timed, and follow-up questions may be asked during this format. We aim to ask up to about five questions, but that will depend on the length of the responses, along with any follow-up discussion during this exchange. Candidates will be allowed to address anything not covered, or that they would like to add clarification to at the end of the interview in their closing remarks. Let's get started. Today, we're speaking with Steve Bulaton, one of the four candidates in this special election. Thank you so much, Steve, for joining me today.
Thank you so much for having me.
Awesome, we're gonna get right into our questions, okay?
Terrific.
Okay. First of all, what is your motivation for running for this seat? For this board of select, uh, select board seat? Where there's only really nine months until you have to run again next spring? And secondly, can you talk about what your vision, or your version of what a select board member should do and be?
Certainly. First, the reason that I'm running is relatively straightforward. Plymouth faces a series of interconnected challenges. We're at a crossroads. We have a growing need for services. In the last 10 years, our population has increased by 15%. We have increasing facilities and infrastructure costs. And the town has certainly seen the effects of not properly maintaining those facilities. We have environmental challenges. We have a coastline that's facing erosion. We have forests that are facing potential drought and fire hazard. And as a sole source aquifer, our water supply is absolutely critical. All of these challenges have led to significant residential tax increases. In the last 10 years, our spending has grown by 43%. And during that same period of time, the amount from residential taxes has increased by 65%. What we're doing isn't sustainable. We need to change our focus and our perspective. I am running because I bring a different perspective. As somebody with degrees in government, law, and finance, and 30 years of working in law for government-related organizations, such as an environmental trade association which lobbied for hazardous waste cleanup in Washington DC, and 25 years in New England representing municipalities in all aspects of their government relations. I bring a different perspective, a different focus. I have learned from the mistakes of others. Now I want to bring that knowledge and experience to the select board. The select board is identified as the policymaking, goal-setting, and regulation-organizing body of the town of Plymouth. That's how it's set forth in our town charter. In short, the select board is the CEO of Plymouth. We should be setting policies, establishing goals, and making regulations to achieve them. I think that the select board has gotten away from that in the last decade or so. And it's time to move that back to where we are. We should be making big-picture decisions that benefit all of Plymouth going forward, recognizing all of these challenges that we're facing. We need to have a single body, working together cooperatively, to come up with plans that can then be implemented by the town.
So, just to piggyback off that for one sec. So, are you, does the select board now, though, have the authority? Does have the power to do that? And if you do, can that be done by people who are really, really working part-time and basically for nothing?
Well, the, the way town government is set up, the select board has certain powers that are established by the town charter.
Right.
And that's what they can do. No, they can't do certain things. They don't do the hiring and firing. They, we have a town manager for that. But what we do is we have the ability to set forth policies, and then direct our town manager, and by extension, our town employees, to carry out those policies. It's simply setting forth the goals of the town. It's saying, "We, the select board, wish to achieve this." For example, "We need to increase our business tax base."
Okay, well, why don't we get into that other question?
Sure.
Because that's a whole nother subject.
Alright, certainly.
Okay, that was great. Alright, so let's go to our next question. Plymouth is the largest town by land in the entire state, and we're using the oldest forms of, of government in the entire country. In your opinion, has Plymouth outgrown the town meeting form of government?
I certainly think that Plymouth has outgrown the town meeting form of government as it is currently situated.
Okay.
That is why 78% of the voters at the last election voted to have a charter commission come and take a look at that. And that's what they're doing. And I think it's a wonderful thing. I think it's something that government should do regardless. And the charter commission has started by presenting some very good ideas, some general, some general forecasts, if you will, and ultimately being very open about what it is looking at, who it is talking to, and making that information available to the public. And I think that we need to see what they're seeing, as well as public putting in its own thoughts and guidance to them as to what we need to do. I certainly think that we need to have a focus on town government that is more full-time and professional. Someone once described to me as saying that Plymouth is a quarter-billion-dollar corporation with 65,000 shareholders. If you were one of those shareholders, would you want a part-time CEO? So I understand that mentality. It's one of the things that I do bring to town government. I am a retired individual, which means that I have the time and the ability to commit to this significant undertaking.
Okay. Alright, in, in your opinion, your own opinion, do you think the town would be better served with a mayoral type versus a town meeting? Just, just if you had to answer that question, yes or no?
I can't answer that question, yes or no. That's why we have a charter commission.
Okay.
I think that it's incumbent upon the town to let them do their job.
Fair enough.
Uh, I, I don't have the information that they have. I don't have the information that I feel I would need to honestly answer that question.
Okay, fair enough. What about the fact that so few people turn out to vote? The percentage of, of voters in all of the towns around here is, is pretty dismal. What is your opinion on that?
It's certainly very disappointing. And I don't think that it has to do with when the election is held, weekday, weekend, spring, summer, fall. Unfortunately, I think that it results from a perception within a lot of people in town that their vote doesn't matter. Plymouth is still very much a tight-knit community. And I think that despite the fact that we have 47,000 registered voters, many of them feel disaffected. They think, gee, this is a group of insiders. It's the same people over and over with the same agendas, and what I have to say really doesn't matter. And that's unfortunate, because voting is one of those great rights that we have. Plymouth, of all places, where the Mayflower Compact started the road to democracy, should be one of those places in which voting is heralded, not something that's considered to be disappointing to the people. It's one of the reasons that I'm running. To show people that you don't have to be an insider. You don't have to have had all of these connections and have all of these support mechanisms in order to come and speak out on behalf of all of the residents. Because the problems that Plymouth faces aren't limited to one neighborhood, or one demographic, or one group. They are town-wide, and we need town-wide solutions. We need voices from all quadrants. And so we really do need to encourage the people to vote by convincing them their vote has meaning.
Exactly, true. Okay, um, let's go to our next question. Although not specifically under the purview of the select board, what is your opinion about the tax burden that is placed on the residents for maintaining services and infrastructure versus increased commercial economic development? Then you have the question of open space. Then you have the question of a separate tax rate for businesses and individuals. It's a huge subject, and it, it, it needs to be addressed clearly. What is your idea for addressing it?
In a 30-minute forum?
Five minutes.
It's not a five-minute problem.
Right.
Obviously. And you've put your finger on a large portion of it. Our problems are interconnected. You really can't address one issue without talking about all of them. You can't talk about taxes without talking about infrastructure spending, without talking about job growth, without talking about development, which leads you to open space and environmental concerns. It is a huge, huge area in which we really need a unified cooperative approach. Let me start with the first part of that, which is the economic issue. Right now, 82% of the taxes that are generated by the town of Plymouth are residential taxes. Building homes doesn't solve that problem, because families moving in cost the town more in services than the taxes that they generate. So the only solution has to be growing business in town. Now, what I'm saying is nothing new. This was pointed out as a forthcoming problem in our 2004 master plan. And successive candidates over the years have all said the same thing. And it's disappointing to me that 20 years later, I'm here saying it again. But rather than taking action and moving forward, the town has actually stepped backwards. We have gone from a 20% commercial and industrial tax base to 14%. It's dropping every year.
Why is that?
Well, part of it is a perception in town, or out of town, that Plymouth is not friendly to business. That has to change. It will require Plymouth to refocus its efforts, not just in encouraging businesses to come here, but in making it easier for them to do so. Narrowing our planning department focus. Creating avenues for people to fast-track if they're going to go into open existing commercial spaces. We also need to start talking about creating jobs that are good for Plymouth residents. We don't need more strip malls. We don't need more big-box stores. We don't need more retail that provide only minimum-wage jobs for people mostly coming outside of Plymouth into town.
Right.
We need to create a business hub in the southeast of Massachusetts.
And you're saying Plymouth could be that hub?
Plymouth is ideally that hub. We have the perfect geographic location. We have the largest population. We have diverse resources available. We have space available now, and we have space to grow, properly grow. We need to do a complete top-down review of where business belongs in Plymouth. We need to make sure that we are looking to encourage those types of businesses that will become part of our community, that will hire our young people, so that they can stay here and continue to be part of our community.
If they can find a place to live that they can afford.
That is part of the development aspect.
Right.
And Plymouth has a wonderful concept in its 2004 master plan, the Village Green concept. The goal was to avoid urban sprawl. It was to zone so that you created communities around a central village. The Pine Hills, White Cliffs, Red Brook. These were all examples. We need more of those with a focus on affordable. And when I say affordable housing, I mean affordable to working people in town.
Right.
But that's where we get to the economics again. In the year 2000, the person making the median income in Plymouth could afford the median house.
Right.
Four years later, impossible.
Right.
Median income had gone up 3%. The median house price, 112%.
Yeah, I knew, I knew it was about 100. That's, I didn't know it was that high.
That's, that was the number according to statistics that I have read. We need to create better jobs so that people can afford the homes. We also still need to create homes that are more affordable. That goes to where some of our zoning is. We still have a lot of area that is zoned for large parcel.
Yeah.
That should be zoned so that we can create clusters of smaller homes around open space.
Right.
So that people are not buying a home based upon the cost of a large lot.
Yep.
But they have access to that needed open space. And open space is critical.
Right.
It's the reason that so many people come here and visit and move here. It's one of the reasons that I moved here. The ability to go walking, hiking, biking is absolutely critical.
And Plymouth, there's no better town around than Plymouth for all of that.
Unquestionable.
Let me do, just ask you to answer this question. Do you think that, that businesses, corporations should have a different tax rate? And should it be depending on if it's a mom-and-pop business versus if it's a conglomerate that's owned by some multinational group?
Creating different tax rates is a huge quagmire. There are a lot of legal aspects that go to that in terms of treating businesses differently.
Differently, okay.
And that's something that requires a lot more study and evaluation. In terms of creating a different business tax rate, most places that do that do it when their business tax base exceeds 30 or 35%.
Which ours does not.
Ours is 14%.
What should it be? In the perfect world?
In the perfect world, I would love to see 30%. I don't see Plymouth as ever being one of those towns in which business exceeds residential.
Right.
It's not, it's not our character. It's not, that would affect the quality of the life of the people here. But we have the room to create clusters for business. But again, the right type of business. The pandemic has changed the way business is done. People are going to be working remotely, even if it's a hybrid model, part-time.
Right.
That's going to give them the opportunity to select the place that they want to live. More people are going to say, "Look, if I only have to be in Boston one or two days a week, I can live in Plymouth."
Yeah.
"And I can take the train up."
Right, I don't mind that commute, one or two days a week.
One or two days a week, versus five.
Okay.
And so we need to be thinking about businesses and people who are conducting that type of business. Because we now have the opportunity to use some of the great personal resources we have in town. We have a wonderful hospital. Jordan was a great hospital, and the affiliation with Beth Israel has made it even more so. We should be the medical center for southeast Massachusetts. People from the Cape should be coming here, not going to Boston when they need medical care.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you on that one, because we've gone way past our five minutes on that question. Thank you. This is totally different. Given society's thirst for instantaneous information and responses, what is your opinion on the use of social media by any department or board committee for the purpose of dispersing or collecting information or opinions? What do you see as advantages and/or as disadvantages? And how do you think the select board should best communicate with everyone? Loaded question.
Very loaded question. And ironically, I know the select board attended an online seminar on ethics just a week or so ago, in which that topic was discussed. So, one of the things that the speaker talked about was the need for a single, consistent message. Because one problem that does come from this instantaneous social world that we live in is a barrage of information. And in a rush to get information out, we have things that are accurate, things that are inaccurate, and things that are partially accurate and potentially misleading. That's the nature of our world right now. But the one thing that the town shouldn't be doing is doing anything to contribute to that. In terms of receiving information from the public, I think social media is a wonderful tool. The days of people needing to seek out their representatives, head to an office, to town hall, to a personal office, to get people to listen to them are over.
Right.
And we're 65,000 people. The select board, as much as I know they, each and every one would love to speak to everybody, simply can't do it. You mentioned again the time constraints that so many have. They are people who are otherwise working. They have families. They have other committees, and they have social commitments.
Right.
It is not completely fair to them to make them full-time employees when that's not the role they signed up for.
Right. So getting back to the best way for any department, any board or committee to communicate to the public, how do, how do we, how do you, how does the select board set that standard to say, "If you want accurate information, this is where you go"?
Well, obviously, through the IT department and through the managers of each of the various town departments, there needs to be a single, consistent policy as to who can speak on social media on behalf of the town. Now, I'm obviously not talking about censoring people's opinions about matters. Everyone has the right to their opinion and should have the right to express it. But in terms of what information comes officially from the town, there needs to be a consistent policy. There needs to be someone identified from each group and organization who can issue those opinions. And there needs to be clear rules and regulations as to what they can issue. They are made, they, they need to have an understanding that this is not a forum for their individual opinion.
Right.
But rather for information coming from the town and for information that the town needs to receive.
Okay, thank you. Is there a question or a topic that we have not covered today that you would like to talk about?
Oh, there are so many. I would love to be able to talk about...
Go ahead.
Oh, land use and environmental concerns and infrastructure spending. Infrastructure spending is obviously a big one. Because maintenance isn't glamorous.
True.
It's not going to grab headlines. It doesn't make for good social media posts. It doesn't create, create photo opportunities. But it's essential. I mean, we have seen all too well the cost of not properly constructing and maintaining our facilities. It is probably the single biggest area of avoidable expense in the town of Plymouth. Now, most maintenance costs are predictable. Families have them all the time. We all budget for them.
Right.
And we treat them as long-term expense. The town doesn't do that. Maintenance is treated as new every year. I think we need to change that. I think we need to create a fund that is automatically funded for maintenance of set facilities and infrastructure. And this is not an out-of-the-box kind of idea. In fact, many federal grants are now requiring that. Because they want to know that when they're providing money to a town to build a project or to purchase equipment, the town has money set aside to maintain that.
Right, right.
It's simply fiscally prudent action.
Why do you think that hasn't been done up until now? Because every town has that same problem.
Because maintenance isn't sexy. Unfortunately, it's, it's a matter of competing.
For dollars.
Wants versus needs. And very often, wants meet, they win out over needs. But if there's a dedicated fund set aside for maintenance, trust me, people will talk about maintenance. Because people will always discuss something where there's money available to spend on it.
Right, right. Now, is there any big, large capital projects that you see that you support or don't support in the future of Plymouth?
I think that the one that we have to focus on, and there are so many, but the one that, that really catches my eye is the need for water security. And this again goes to, as I said, the land use aspect as well. We need to make sure that as a sole-source aquifer community, we are doing what we need to protect our water supply. Water is the genesis of almost everything. It will be the gen, it's the genesis of how we live. It is the genesis of our business. It is the genesis of so much of our recreation, which leads, of course, to our tourism, which is again one of our largest businesses. So, I think what we need to do is make sure we have proper land use study to protect those areas that we truly need to protect for environmental concerns and water protection. And at the same time, make sure that we complete the necessary studies so that we know what type of wells we're going to be needing in the future. Because I've seen studies going back from 2016 talking about two wells, three wells, four wells.
Yeah. And you really have to educate yourself on this subject, because it's, it's, it's quite involved. The whole, I mean, people just think you turn on the tap and the water's there. I mean, you see the signs now around town saying, "Don't water your lawn." People need the water the lawns don't.
It's very true. And it's part of the national discussion, obviously. We're seeing water shortages. We're, we're looking at Lake Mead at a level that is beyond drought stage. We're looking at an inability for people to have drinking water. We need to look at conservation. That is a huge issue. And again, preserving open spaces rather than lawns, but natural habitat is going to certainly help that. At the same time, I've had the good fortune to be associated with environmental engineers for most of my career. I've dealt with water projects in towns all over New England. So I do have a pretty good understanding as to what is involved from an engineering standpoint in terms of building, maintaining water infrastructure systems.
So that, that's a big one in your, in your book.
It is, but you know, there's, there's the phrase, "Water is life."
Yeah.
And I don't think there's a much better truism.
Right. And I think a lot of people would agree with you on, on that topic. So, you have a few minutes left here. Want to take a couple minutes just to address the people, the voters, and why they should be voting for you this time around?
I would love to, thanks so much.
And you can actually, you can look right into your own camera there.
I hope you've heard from what I've said today that my education and experience bring a different perspective to town government. As I said, I have a bachelor's degree, a law degree, and a degree in international finance. The critical thinking skills and experiences that I gained from that education, which was so instilled by my parents into me, have prepared me well for a 30-year legal career focusing heavily on government. As I mentioned, I started my legal career representing environmental engineering trade associations, lobbying to clean up circula and recr sites throughout the United States. From there, I moved to Massachusetts, and I have represented businesses and municipalities in all of their key functions for over 25 years. I've had the ability to work with literally dozens of cities and towns addressing almost every aspect of municipal government. I've handled bidding challenges, contract negotiations, construction claims, employment disputes, and data breaches, just some. And I've had the good fortune to represent municipal employees, such as police officers, teachers, bus drivers, and administrators in claims brought against them relating to their town functions. I've had the ability to see from the inside what so many towns have done right and done wrong. As I tell people, my job for 25-plus years has been to learn from other people's mistakes. I want to bring that experience to the Plymouth Select Board. I have no agenda. I have no financial interests that I'm trying to protect. I have no constituency that I am trying to satisfy. I am an independent voice for everyone here in Plymouth. In order to address these critical issues, we need new ideas. We need new approaches, and we need to take a cooperative spirit into our discussions. I come to the select board willing to work with everyone. I come to the select board willing to work with everyone for the benefit of everyone. I hope I have your vote on August fourteenth.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Steve, for joining us. Thank you for participating. We wish you the best of luck throughout this campaign and in your election. For our viewers, thank you for joining us. If you're interested in watching replays of this interview, please visit our website, packtv.org/elections for replay times and online viewing options, including PAC TV's on-demand and streaming service, PAC TV Prime. And please make your choices heard by voting in the special election on Saturday, August fourteenth. Thank you and good day.